We have a couple of members of the public and our first candidate. Okay, here's Jennifer.
All right.
Recording in progress.
All right, I call this meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order at 10:00 past 4:00 on October 6th. This is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of Township Administrator. We are holding this meeting in person, but we are still operating under the Washtenaw County Emergency Order, and this extends the option for members of the Board of Trustees to participate remotely. The Board has also decided to extend this option to members of the public for purposes of viewing and to make public comments. When the clerk calls the roll, those members of the Board of Trustees who are present at the Township Hall need only indicate that they are present. If you are participating remotely, please state so and indicate your location by the municipality. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff?
Present.
Corto?
Present. Ames, Story County, Iowa.
Jerome?
Present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel?
Present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel?
Present, Scioto Township.
All are here.
Thank you. Our agenda for for Township Administrator, and we have with us from Amy Sel Associates, we have Jennifer Daly, is that right? Who will be
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. Who will be facilitating that process.
And all participants, please oh, please mute yourself, thank you. Sorry, that was just Christie's desk. Please stay muted.
All right. So I believe we can proceed with that. Oh, I should indicate that there will be a time for public comments at the end of the meeting, and in that way, members of the public who would like to use that opportunity to share thoughts with us can do so after the interviews. They'll be able to react. But there's also other ways for members of the public to participate.
It's on the website.
Oh, it's on the website, yes. So you can weigh in that way or via the website. And with that, Jennifer, I hand it over to you.
Thank you. Do we have Elle Cole?
Yes.
Is she here?
Yes. Would you like me to bring her in?
Okay. Yes, please bring her in. If you could let me know when she's on here, I'm not seeing her.
Yep, here she is. Elle, I just asked you to start your video, and here you are.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am pleased to present to the Board Elle Cole. Elle, before we get started, could you provide a two to three-minute introduction of yourself?
Yes, thank you so much. First, thank you so much for having me be part of this process and considering me as your next Township Administrator. I'm just honored and really thrilled to be here. So I am CPA, and I'm currently getting my Master's in Public Administration. I have over 25 years. Wow, that goes by fast, hard to believe, but 25 years of experience in municipal sector. I started my career out at Plant and Ran, which I know as your auditor. I found that I had a love of nonprofit and public sector clients because I felt that I was helping make a difference in the world, and that's how the service of my career has led me. So I actually am a resident here in Ann Arbor, and very much would be intrigued to serve the community that I work in.
Okay. I will now call on board members in alphabetical order to ask the previously agreed-upon questions. We'll go through the questions until 4:45, so we will allow five minutes for Elle to ask questions. The very first question goes to trustee Corto.
Good afternoon, Ms. Cole. Thank you for joining us. I wonder if you could please describe your leadership style and how you will support the different departments of the township. Oh, I'm so sorry. I read the wrong lines. I apologize. Let me give you my actual question.
Okay.
What is your communication style, and how will it ensure that there is a free flow of information from department leaders to the Board of Trustees?
Thank you so much for both questions. They're both wonderful. My communication style is very open. I have an open door policy for all people I serve. I look at not only my serving of the Board of Trustees, but certainly all of the people that I work with at the township. Having that open door policy means that people can approach me and come to me with any issues they're having. Being the Township Administrator, it would be, I would see it as my role to communicate what the direction of the Board is for the township to go in. I would obviously do that through all forms of communication that I had available to me, through meetings, through email, through direct communication. I certainly am a big believer, anytime I can get up and walk over and have a conversation with someone, that I do that. I certainly believe in communicating any type of event that's happening to the people that affects, including the Board, so that no one comes to a situation and is surprised.
Thank you.
Okay, next question goes to clerk Flintoff.
Hi, Ms. Cole. Thank you so much for being here. Would you please describe your leadership style and how you will support the different departments of the township?
I view my leadership style as collaborative. I like to work with people, and I find it very beneficial when we're all working together and we have buy-in on the ideas and the goals that we're trying to meet. So my leadership style is one that I want everyone to feel a part of what we're doing and accomplishing. So if I have a directive from the Board, I really want to engage and inspire my staff to really take ownership of what we're trying to accomplish and why we're trying to accomplish it. And I believe that I do that through a lot of my experience. So, you know, coming from a background of being a finance person, I really understand the operations of all parts of the township, from the inside and from the outside. So I like to explain to them why what we're doing is so important, why we're trying to reach the goal that we're going to reach. So I view it as a very collaborative agreement. And then helping staff and leadership come up with the goals together, and then ensuring accountability along the way to make sure that those goals are being met. And then as far as the second part of the question, which was support to the different departments, I work very closely with all of the department heads. They background in this through developing budgets and working with people on every month going through the revenues and expenses. So I have kind of grown up with this theory of working very closely with my department heads because they're the ones that have the knowledge of the subject that's at hand, and also the knowledge of what's happening in the field. So gaining their insight, you know, trying to understand where they're coming from and how I can best support and help them to connect with the Board.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Hathaway?
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here today. My question is, how should human resources tactics be used to develop, support, and recognize township staff?
I think that it's very important with human resources, again, to connect with the staff and lay out those goals that are, they are to be accomplished, and celebrate it when those are accomplished. So that goes from, you know, team meetings to, you know, different things that we can do to celebrate, whether it's, you know, Employee of the Month, just different things that we can do to kind of inspire and engage employees to do their best along the way. One of the things that we really enjoy doing with my staff currently is celebrating, maybe a big deal out of celebrating everybody's birthday, or if they have a big accomplishment they've had work-wise or in their personal life. So I think that that's very important to acknowledge when people are doing things well.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Jerome?
Yes, how would you define performance metrics for township government?
I would define performance metrics. Definitely, performance metrics have to be met to serve the public. So I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's when he asked me a question. With performance metrics, it's really important to work with the Board of Trustees to determine where we're going to be going, what goals are to be met, and how we're going to meet them. And once I have a good understanding of how those performance tech, those performance measures are going to be used, and then deploy them to each of the departments and the staff that they impact and affect, ultimately to be of best service to our residents.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
Welcome. Could you describe the role of a Township Administrator and how it works with the Board of Trustees?
The role of a Township Administrator, as I see it, is to serve the Board of Trustees. I am given direction from the elected officials and the goals that we are to accomplish for the township, for the residents. And then it is my responsibility to then make sure that those goals are met and communicate obstacles along the way, or communicate timelines that may be set back or pushed forward. Are big wins, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer Palmer?
Describe your level of experience with finance and accounting, in particular for project budgeting.
I have a wealth of experience being a CPA in municipal finance. So I have the most portion of my career, the past 24 years, has been as a CPA in municipal finance, and then the last 11 years as in CFO roles for government. It was this last past year, I've been acting as Township Administrator. So I have extensive experience with finance. I love it. I believe that when you understand the finances, that you get to understand the lifeline of any organization, and it's especially true with municipalities. As far as project management goes, I have an extensive experience with all kinds of different project management, from the time that I was an auditor and auditing projects, to then being in charge, being inside municipalities and operating large projects, even with Army Corps. I know for Tennessee County, we ran up to 20 projects at a time, keeping track of all those expenses, documenting everything, and coming up with accurate systems for accountability and transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel?
Jane, you're muted still.
Okay, let me do it again. Can you hear me out?
Yes.
Okay. So how would you handle a situation where you were given conflicting guidance from two board members?
This is a tricky situation. So when I'm getting given conflicting guidance from two different trustees, I want to make sure that it's really conflicting and understand what each trustee's perspective is. And if there's a way for us to come together and kind of come down to the common denominator of what the course of action should be. If it still continues to be a conflict, and I'm given two different directions to go in, then I would actually come back to the Board and get decisive direction on which way I should proceed.
Thank you. Trustee Corto?
Thank you. What would be your process to identify and apply for grants?
So luckily, I have a lot of experience in grants and have a lot of wonderful connections in the grant world. Being connected with our colleagues working at Moran, working with wonderful organizations like the Michigan Township Association, the MML, and being a part of those groups, you really get to know people and understand, and if you keep up on your, the current events and what's happening, grants coming through. I guess with a finance background, I get a lot of that information through those types of channels. And I think that, especially now in the current situation where we have so many more grants happening, wonderful websites that they all have available to keep us posted on grants that are available and taking those opportunities.
Thank you.
Clerk Flintoff?
How would you bring together a strong staff, engaged community, and talented Board of Trustees?
I view the Township Administrator role as really a bridge for communication. The trustees are the ones that really set our path on where the township is to go. You've been elected by the people to make decisions on what's best for the township. And as you make those decisions, I see it as my role to bridge that communication to the department heads, to the staff, to the community, so that everyone is knowing what's happening in the township, the great things that we're working on, the struggles that we're encountering along the way, making sure that everything is very accountable, everything's communicated, and it's done with accuracy and on a timely basis.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hathaway?
Please describe your ability to multitask and to follow through on complicated issues.
Absolutely. I think that as a Township Administrator, currently, that's one thing I feel that certainly excel with. I enjoy having the environment where, you know, we're having quick decisions and kind of moving from one direction to another and being able to kind of keep track of all that. So the way that I do it is I am a big believer in tracking things with project management software and keeping tasks at hand, making sure that I'm always prioritizing what's most important. I'll use a little example that I like to tell my staff, which is called Rocks First. If you imagine you have a mason jar, you know, and you want to, and you have a whole pile of rocks, big ones, medium-sized ones, little ones, and sand. I always say prioritize your day and your projects and your tasks, what you have to do, make sure that those big rocks get done first. Because then when you go and fit the big rocks in the jar first, and then the medium rocks, which are the littler tasks, and the sand, it will all fit into the mason jar perfectly. So that's how I look at my day with my staff and with myself. What are the most important things that need to be accomplished, and making sure that those get done and followed through on?
Trustee Jerome?
Yeah, as a follow-up, how do you adjust your communication style to, for those different audiences?
With the Board of Trustees, I definitely have a different relationship because I'm listening and I am communicating to you information that you may need on different agenda items, on different projects, things that are happening in the township. So I have a communication style that's, you know, much more open and kind of listening, but also communicating all of the information that you need to know. And then I would adjust my style with my staff, letting them know your direction. So it's, it's much more communicating what I'm learning from you and really being that bridge to give them the information that's needed. And listening to them, too, on, with their expertise and their knowledge, and making sure that that's, you know, coming back up the channel as well.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
How would you get involved and engaged with a new community?
Well, luckily, I live in Ann Arbor, and if I were to be so lucky to be your next Township Administrator, I certainly would look at moving back to the township because I actually used to be a resident there. So it just would throw me to no end to be involved, and I am with all of the different groups, really look at the community, nonprofits, all the different engagement groups that I could be involved in, and, and really help and volunteer and support in Scioto Township.
Okay, thank you. Treasurer Palmer?
What types of projects have you worked on in the past, and what were the outcomes they brought about?
Wonderful question. I have worked on a lot of time projects, so timekeeping software, moving from paper time cards to electronic time cards. I have a very in-depth experience in managing IT. I've migrated from 22 servers to one server cloud-based system. And so I have a lot of experience with software, implementing new software systems. So I'm sure most of you are familiar with BSNA, which is what I believe the Township currently uses. So I've migrated from other softwares to BSNA, and from BSNA to other software systems. And, and then a lot of different projects for grants. So getting grant money in and then, you know, having those through the Army Corps, having to keep track of how we're building and what we're building for the pipeline, and reporting for those projects. I've had projects go very smooth, and then I've had hiccups along the way, certainly with anytime you're moving from paper time cards to people clocking in and clocking out digitally, it creates a lot of change management. So with that being a specialty of mine, I actually have a lot of change management experience as well.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel?
So how would you stay up to date with best practices in local government?
I would absolutely be very, very engaged in Michigan Township Association, like I am currently. I think that they are such a phenomenal source and resource in townships. I would certainly continue my education through Eastern Michigan University, getting my Master's of Public Administration has been another phenomenal resource for me learning about staying up to date in what's happening locally, and be involved in our governments and different things that are coming from the state of Michigan and from Lansing, and just really staying involved in those core groups, which has changed a lot. You know, everyone used to meet and have roundtables. Now it's a lot of webinars and meetings with people via Zoom, like we are tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Corto?
What is your experience preparing, reviewing, and executing contracts?
I have a lot of experience in contracts. So I actively have prepared contracts since I have been a CFO for the last 10 years. Different contracts for just about everything that you could imagine. So everything from software to agreements, maybe selling land, I was actually up there in contracts that I've been involved with, contracts for services with attorneys, contracts for employees. So I've had a lot of experience preparing and reviewing and executing contracts very successfully. I like to bargain, get a good price, too, when we're, when we're going to purchase items.
Thank you.
Clerk Flintoff?
Sure. If you were selected as the Township Administrator, what would your first 90 days look like?
My first 90 days would be a lot of listening and learning about Scioto Township. I would spend as much time as I could learning from the trustees, and from the supervisor, and the clerk, and the treasurer in the township. And I would spend just as much time working with the staff, shadowing them, learning what they're doing, what tasks they're doing, what they're doing well, the struggles they're having, and reviewing and just learning and soaking in as much as I can in order to get a good base of knowledge to prepare to support the Board and to support the staff and department heads. I will give you an example. When I was at Tennessee County Water, the water treatment system, I didn't really know much about water treatment, and when I started to see different parts come in or costs come in, I didn't really know what it was for. So I took the time to go out and actually do a tour of the water treatment plant, which was a little bit smelly, but I learned so much and still to this day was one of the best experiences. So I really like to go out and spend time in every department and learn about operations from the people who are, who are operating those programs.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway?
Please describe your experience partnering with outside consultants to ensure effective service delivery.
I think consultants are a wonderfully valuable part of today's modern government. They provide services that have expertise at a level that we may not be able to obtain otherwise. I have experience working with auditors, attorneys, HR consultants, operational consultants with assessing and planning.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
Yes, what is your experience with applying best practices for improvements in business processes and workflows?
That is my favorite thing in the world to do. So this is how my mind works. I'm very efficiency-driven. So when I talk about, keep in mind with my finance background, I've had, you know, 20 years, 25 years of learning best practices for internal controls and just for efficiency, especially with some of the time management processes that I've gone through. So while I'm sitting back and I'm learning what everyone's doing, I'm also thinking about how to make that the best situation, the most effective and efficient, because I really truly believe with my whole heart, it's our duty to the public to be as effective and efficient as we can be.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
What challenges do you see the township facing in coming years?
So just looking at Scioto Township on the outside, I'm going to speak generally about this because I don't know Scioto Township intimately, but you have this wonderful growing community that, you know, it was small, right? So you're going from this small township to this very, to this very growing, expanding community. So you're experiencing some challenges probably with, you know, changing from the way we used to do things to how a larger township is going to operate. Also challenges probably with making sure your economic development and is, is growing the way that you want it to grow and continues on that path that it's already on. Also, the environmental concerns that you have, and making sure that those are corrected for the residents.
Could you be a little more specific on the environmental concerns?
Absolutely. So I did take some time to read through issue that you're having, and, forgive me, wanted to just, you know, say that with the gentleman sciences issue that, you know, I do have a pretty, I know enough to be dangerous in water, and I love water, and I love environmental services. I certainly have a passion for it. Water is such an important resource. It's something that oftentimes can be taken for granted, but when you read cases like this, certainly But when you read cases like this, certainly this is going to be a challenge. And I would want to be a partner, an advocate for the residents and trustees every step of the way.
Okay, thank you.
Treasurer Palmer?
How would you calm down a contentious situation?
I think it's very important when we have a contentious situation to heasably, you know, say that, remind people of why we're here. And that's to serve residents. In a situation where it is in a public meeting, sometimes allowing people to say their piece and moving on is the best way to get through a tough situation. Within the township offices, I, I think the best way to solve an issue is really to bring the people who are having the issue together. To sit down in a roundtable to openly discuss what our issues are. I'm not the type to ever listen to one side and have one person come in and then have another person come in. I just bring everybody together. And I'd like to put those issues out on the table. And then I look to those two people, three people, four people to produce a solution to the conflict. And I want them to present to me how they each can work through the conflict together and agree to that and have a set of goals that we can stick to. So in the future, when there are issues surrounding the same conflict, we can return back to what are our goals? What did we agree to? Are we operating under that agreement? I feel that when people have buy-in in the outcome, when they're passionate about something, it helps correct the situation and bring out the best outcome for everyone.
Thank you. Our last question goes to trustee Vogel.
Can you please describe your experience facilitating strategic planning discussions?
Absolutely. I love strategic planning. You've kind of heard me talk about it a lot tonight already. So having a mission and a vision and strategic objectives that support that are certainly the way, certainly the ways that we will create the budget. So my experience has been creating, helping not only create mission and vision and strategic objectives, but I've had years of it right alongside creating those budgets. Because when you know which way a board wants to go, then you can have your budget support that. So if you, you know, not that this is in the works, but let's say that you wanted to buy a new fire truck. You know, and that's in your, in your strategic objective, that's one of the things that you want to replace and be on top of your capital assets for your fire department. You know, reflecting in that properly in a budget and carrying it through all the way up to the mission. I think that's the best way to support and justify. And when things are out of sync.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Not have those be impacted.
Thank you. That concludes all of the questions that we have. But we do have about five minutes for questions that you may have, Al, for the board.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's so hard to do these interviews via Zoom. Kind of get a sense of personally who I am. And I wanted to kind of see, you know, how you see my role as township administrator when you look at what I would be performing the duties of, how can I best support board and trustees?
I, I lost some of what you were saying.
I did too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if I cut out there. I want to know how, in my role as township administrator, how do you see me supporting the board and the staff in Sciop?
I, I think.
That would be a great question for the three officers to address.
I was, I was going to say, my, my hope for the township administrator is to sort of serve as a operations overseer, to sort of really make sure that the township government, all parts of it are, are working together efficiently and smoothly. So all of the emphasis that you put on communication earlier in the questions, I think is, is spot on in terms of the role that I, I see the township administrator playing.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that answer. That's, I truly believe I, I would never want anyone to be in a situation where they were surprised by something happening. To, to further talk about communication, my next question is, let's say a year from now, we're putting together, we're asked to put together an article for the newspaper on the things that we had accomplished together. What would you say are the top three most important things that we could accomplish for the Sciop Township residents that we would want to put in the report?
Do you, do you want to?
I'm thinking.
Wait.
Oh. I'm thinking.
The one-year goal, is that a question?
Yeah, so a year from now, I think, one thing I think would be great for us to be clear about is some of these major infrastructure, capital improvements, to sort of be clear about some decisions with regard to those. Obviously, we can't have accomplished all of them in that one-year timeframe. But to have some clarity about sort of priorities and I think also a clear sense of sort of how we're going to structure the financing of those.
Great. And you guys asked me a wonderful question about the biggest obstacles. So I, I wanted to really know, in addition to kind of funding those, those capital assets, what are the other obstacles that you really see us walking through in the next one to five years?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. I, I would suggest, I think Gelman is, is a huge task. It's complicated legally, technically. And then I'd say that's our, our biggest external threat, I would say, is, is Gelman. Internally, biggest challenges, I think, are the, the need for development around our information systems and our human resources are the two key operational areas. We have great staff here, but have a, have a lot of room for training and developing and, and kind of looking at all of our business processes to be more efficient and to deliver better services for the residents. And that's really across the board from fire to water.
Wonderful. Well, it sounds like my experience certainly would lend to that. Not only that, but it sounds like I would really enjoy being able to help walk through some of the obstacles. I guess my, my last question, if I still have time. You know, I, I had the wonderful opportunity to speak with, and kind of talk with your staff a little bit this morning. And there's kind of like this balance between finance and the township administrator and the budgeting process. So I will know, how do you see my role as a township administrator with the finance area?
We have a major disagreement about it at the moment, is, is what I would say probably between my, my next door neighbor here, the supervisor, and myself. In that finance has, you know, is a function of, of the clerk's office. And budgeting is a duty of the supervisor. And it's great to have a supervisor and a, you know, soon-to-be administrator working on the budget. But in terms of, you know, kind of the financial reporting and how we build out the strategic planning, you know, it's, it's certainly something we've debated publicly and will, will continue to debate until we settle it.
Well, thank you for that honesty. Sorry to touch on that, sir.
Yes, no, it's fine. I'd like to add something to that. We certainly have always been a team working on the financial aspect of the township. And I would expect my administrator to be a part of that because it affects the job they do too. So we're working towards a better way.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. And I certainly would love to help make that gel.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well.
Now, is there a transition here to?
Oh, you know, Jennifer, I'm bringing Jennifer back in. Excuse me, she fell off too.
Oh, thank you so much for all of your time. I can't tell you how much you appreciate, I appreciate it. And I really truly hope that you find the right person for your next township administrator.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for buzzing through so many questions with us.
All right. Thank you. It was a great experience.
Thank you. Do we have Greg Elliott available?
Sure, just one moment. Greg Elliott? I, I do not yet see Greg. No, we do not.
Okay. Do we want to wait a couple minutes to see if he logs on?
He's scheduled for.
Right, he's scheduled for right now, so.
Okay.
I think we have to wait. And I apologize, I did lose connection and had to re-join you. I couldn't get the video to work, so.
Here's Greg. I'll bring him in.
Hi Greg, are you able to hear us?
I am, thank you.
All right. I am pleased to introduce Greg Elliott to the board. Greg, before we begin, can you tell us about a two to three-minute introduction of yourself?
Sure. So I started my career in Pittsfield Township after getting my masters in public administration from Eastern. I was in the eighties, late eighties, and I worked there for 10 years. First as essentially community development director, I kind of evolved that role when I was there. And then later I was also the township's utility director. During that time, I went to law school at night, graduated in 96 and started practicing. Then left the township, started practicing in 97. Practiced for quite a number of years. Ultimately, at a certain point in my legal career, didn't have enough legal work anymore to, I was always, almost always a solo practitioner, didn't have enough legal work to continue doing that. So I went in with McKenna, planning consulting firm. Worked with them for a number of years as an employee, then also for a time as a subconsultant, also practicing law. Joined the city of Adrian in 2019 as their, originally as their community development director. But pretty shortly after I joined them, their city administrator resigned to become Livingston County Administrator. And I took over as city administrator at that time. First being appointed interim in July of 2020 and then confirmed that position in September of 2020. That is what I currently do.
All right. Thank you, Greg. I will now call, now call on board members in alphabetical order to ask the previously agreed-upon questions. We will go through the questions until 5:35 so that we will allow five minutes for the, for you to ask any questions that you may have. So the first question goes to trustee Corto.
Good afternoon, Mr. Elliott, and thank you for joining us. What is your communication style? And how will it ensure that there is a free flow of information from department leaders to the board of trustees?
Yeah, in my role, I like to err on the side of transparency at all times. And so I make sure that anything that I even, as city administrator in Adrian, I think I make sure that anything that I think may have, may be of interest to the city commission, I, I convey to them immediately. I use a lot of email communication for that purpose. I understand it's foiable, you know. And so I craft my messages appropriately because that's quite a hobby in Adrian is voying or communications. But like I say, I try to keep that information available for them in real time that I think is important to them. Likewise, I have a very open-door collaborative policy with my staff. My favorite thing is when two or three of them are in my office at the same time. And we're discussing some city business, getting different perspectives on that. All the staff are always welcome to attend city commission meetings. We've made a, a policy decision coming out of the pandemic to retain Zoom as an option for the public to participate in our meetings. And so they can be there at every meeting. All the public can be there conveniently at every meeting. As I say, I want to be extremely transparent and accessible in my communication style.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff?
Hi, Mr. Elliott. Thanks for being here. Please describe your leadership style and how you will support the different departments of the township.
So leading by example, try to demonstrate a good work ethic, but also patience and good listening skills with the staff, which I hope they will in turn carry forward with their, their report, direct reports as well. Like I alluded to earlier, always have an open door. I want as much information as staff wants to share with me. I never try to filter them out in terms of what they want to tell me. And I tell them that upfront, that all information is good as far as I'm concerned. I try to always make time when a staff member wants to come in and see me, regardless of what the other constraints on my time might be, so that they feel heard. And obviously, the mission is defined by the township board and not by me. But it's my job to articulate that mission to the staff and make sure they understand where we're going with it. I like to say that you take the deal with the team that you've got. And so in dealing with staff, I try to play to their strengths and avoid their weaknesses. I don't try to mold people into something that they're not. And I feel like staff that I've had over the years have really appreciated that and have exhibited quite a substantial amount of loyalty to me and the organization as a result of that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hathaway?
Thank you for joining us today. How should human resources tactics be used to develop, support, and recognize township staff?
Well, like I say, I always want our HR program to be playing to the strengths of our staff. So they have interest areas, they certainly want to budget for and provide opportunities for them to train up in those areas and to explore them and, and become stronger in them. Human resources obviously holds the rulebook for how we all work. And it's important that everybody understands, everybody plays by the same. And it's important that everybody understands, everybody plays by the same set of rules who works for any unit of government. They make sure those policies are applied equally and across the board. But it shouldn't be an intimidating department. It should be a department that, as you say, supports staff and the growth of staff in their positions.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
Yes, good afternoon. How would you define performance metrics for township government?
Well, we like to set, in my organization, we like to set annual goals and have those be agreed upon goals in our annual review. You know, and I don't think there's one size that fits all as it relates to that. Every employee's different, every department's different, every department is different in terms of what you need. But if, you know, I, I understand an important performance metric to be agreed upon goals that are measurable, that we then can reevaluate our progress towards the next time we get together during our annual review or periodically, if that's the case maybe.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
Yes, could you please describe the role of a township administrator and how it works with the township board of trustees?
Well, my understanding of that role is that it is the implementer of the policies of the board of trustees. Now, that could be different from township to township. And as you know, many townships don't have an administrator or a manager and are in fact managed by the three officers. And that was the case in Pittsfield when I worked there. And is still the case in Pittsfield, with supervisor clerk and treasurer and back on the day-to-day operations with the assistance of a substantial number of staff. A lot of people when I was at Pittsfield thought of me sort of as the de facto township manager in those days because I managed a lot of projects. We did a lot of road paving in those days. I was, as I mentioned, the utilities director. I built that water tower you see on 91. So, you know, but to, you know, to directly answer your question, you implement the things that your role means for you to implement. And we manage staff that the board has decided that position should manage. And I would envision it being the manager of all the employees, obviously, other than the electeds for the unit of government and providing oversight for both department heads as they fulfill their various functions.
Just to follow up on your answer, Pittsfield is a charter township and SIO is a general law township. Could you comment that factor into your, your answer in any way?
Um, no, I don't think it, it does. I mean, obviously, there was more that Pittsfield could do with, with its additional resources that, that charter status provided. But, uh, no, I don't, I don't think it would change my answer.
Thank you.
Treasurer Palmer?
Describe your level of experience with finance and accounting, in particular for project planning and budgeting.
I'm sorry, I missed that question. Could you repeat the question for me, please?
I'd be glad to. Describe your level of experience with finance and accounting, in particular for project budgeting and planning.
Thank you. So our budget at the city of Adrian is, the general fund budget is $13 million. I'm responsible for that, of course. The, we do have a finance director who's immediately responsible for preparing that. But in other settings, I've, I've been a project manager, like I was alluding to earlier. In Pittsfield, one of us utilities director, we constructed a million dollar water and sewer infrastructure expansion on the west side of the township that I was project manager for. I did a number of road paving jobs there. Like I said, built the water tower, built a water booster station when I was there. My background, my bachelor's degree was in business administration. Later followed up in public administration with a master's. So I have training in that area and I've got exposure to, uh, pretty substantial exposure as well.
Thank you.
Trustee Vogel?
Jane, sorry, we can't hear you. Pardon me. And I apologize, I have had to mute my colleagues when they're not speaking just because we're getting some feedback here. So, Jane?
Right. So can I stay unmuted or is there too much feedback?
We can try. Go for it.
Okay. So thank you, Greg. Here's the question. How would you handle a situation where you were given conflicting guidance from two board members?
Well, ultimately, you work for the board as a whole. You know, the individual, the township is tricky, of course, because you have statutory roles of the three full-time officers, I assume you're full-time, as supervisor clerk and treasurer. But in, from a, from the board's standpoint, the board speaks as a whole. Board speaks through its, its majority. And you need to look to the, to the guidance that is being given by the majority of the board.
Thank you. Trustee Corte?
Thank you.
What would be your process to identify and apply for grants?
Well, I think it's important to be having conversations with your colleagues continuously and with people in the industry. Because in my experience, more often than anything else, that's where you hear about those kinds of opportunities. They found likewise participating in, for cities, it's the municipal league functions. Municipal league has a lunch, a video session every Monday, live from the league. I assume the township association has something similar. When I was with Pittsfield, I always made sure I went to all the MTA conventions, learned a lot at those. And, you know, and all, and all those kinds of, and your consultants, if you have them, are quite well aware of those things as well and will identify those opportunities to you. But it's networking, more than anything else, I think, that allows you to be aware of opportunities that are out there. Of course, I know of many of them through my work experience as well.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff?
How would you bring together a strong staff, engaged community, and a talented board of trustees?
Wow. Well, like I mentioned a couple of times, I, I feel like my approach to all things is, is highly collaborative. And having opportunities for all, both staff and the public to be participants at township board meetings is, I think, important. If nothing else, having them want to tune in. I, I don't know if you broadcast your meetings on Zoom, but I found that's extremely helpful in achieving engagement, both from the staff and the public. That, to me, that, that transparency that I spoke of at the beginning allows for everybody to be interested and engaged. And if there's a civil dialogue that goes on, that can, that can lead to some very nice things.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway?
Please describe your ability to multitask and to follow through on complicated issues.
Well, you know, I would say I'm good at that. Like I say, I, I try to keep an open door at all times right now at city hall. And that means I'm constantly being interrupted by staff with this, that, or the other thing that they want to talk to me about while I'm proceeding to do my daily tasks that I've set out for, for myself that day and prepare for the city commission meeting or the planning commission meeting or whatever it is that we have in that evening. Through the course of my life, I've, I've juggled quite a number of different things. Like I alluded to, for a time, I both practiced law and was a planning consultant and would be juggling between court appearances and evening planning commission meetings and travel times for all those things. And so got a, got a fair amount of exposure to having a lot of balls in the air at the same time.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
So as you're juggling all those things, how do you adjust your communication style for different audiences?
Well, it's about understanding your audience and speaking in a way that is respectful of who they are. You don't talk down to them, but you don't try to talk above their head either, depending on who it is. I feel like I've been fortunate in my life. I come from pretty humble beginnings up north, you know, but I've operated in sophisticated circles as, you know, during my career. And so I feel like I've got the ability to speak to people from many different walks of life. And I try to, as I say, be cognizant of who my audience is in crafting my message.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
How would you get involved and engaged with the new community?
Well, it's not entirely a new community to me. We're speaking about SIO and that I've lived in Washita County now since my wife and I moved back here in 1986. I had previously gone to U of M for a couple of years prior to that. So Washita County generally feels like home to me. I'm, I'm not as aware of particular issues in SIO as I, I live in Depot Town in Ipsy right now, even though I work in Adrian. So what I, what I do right now, in case you're wondering, is I have an apartment in Adrian where I stay during the week and I come home to Ipsy on the weekend. Part of, part of my motivation for working closer to home, quite honestly. So, you know, keeping up on, you, I, I find that when you're in government, you know very well what's going on in the community and you are, you know, forced isn't the right word, but you're compelled to, to be engaged with, I have your finger on the pulse of the community. Your, the, the people who are involved in municipal government know better than anybody else what's happening in that community. And so it's a, you know, the first number of months on the job are a learning tour. And it could be, and you shouldn't go in thinking that you know what's going on. You should go in with your ears open and with the attitude that you're going to learn what's going on.
Thank you. Treasurer Palmer?
What types of projects have you worked on in the past? And what were the outcomes they brought about?
Well, the one that immediately comes to mind is the water and sewer infrastructure project that I mentioned. That was a big one. And the outcome of it was that it completely changed what the west side of Pittsfield Township looks like. Without water and sewer out there, housing wasn't an option, and commercial development wasn't an option. So everything that you've seen develop out there, Oak Valley Center, all the subdivisions that surround it, all of those things. In fact, previously, the Meyer project on Ann Arbor Salimwell before that was a lesser water and sewer extension project that we did. You know, it, it was transformative. Now, people will have different opinions, whether that was good or bad. But policymakers in Pittsfield at that time believed that it was a good thing. And in building it, it came out exactly as we had envisioned. I don't know if you know, but Oak Valley Road was entirely a, a, a creation of an idea that we had in the master plan that we wrote during my time there to create a loop road outside of I-94. And it came to fruition completely through the planning process. The township did not build any of that road. It facilitated some of it in terms of special assessment financing. But it was entirely implemented through the, through the process of approving various manure development plans. And that was one of the important arterial roads in the county. I would point to that as, as an example of following a project through the completion and seeing a pretty, pretty significant and stark change as a result of it.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel?
So how would you stay up to date with best practices in government?
I currently am a member of ICMA, but and I participate, I'm a certified planner, as you know, so I participate in all the continuing edification for that as well. Obviously, I'm a lawyer. Lawyers in Michigan don't have specific continuing ed requirements, but as a matter of professional practice, we need to keep on top of our profession nonetheless. So I, I'm reading and participating in a lot of things that bear on best practices in government. I think that's part and parcel of being a government professional.
Thank you. Trustee Corte?
What is your experience preparing, reviewing, and executing contracts?
I'm a lawyer, so I've, I've written quite a few, and negotiated quite a few over my career.
Can you maybe provide a couple of examples of things that you think are, you're pleased of?
Well, lots of real estate deals, obviously. Many business deals, operating agreements, employment contracts, you know, a number of commercial transactions. For a time, I was general counsel for what was then called Rock Companies. It's an affiliate of what's now Rocket Mortgage. And, you know, reviewing contracts every week for one business deal or, or vendor or another. Lots of work with, with leases. I did a lot of landlord tenant practice in my day.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff?
If you were selected as the township administrator, what would your first 90 days look like?
Visiting all the staff, visiting all the... Visiting all the staff, visiting all the facilities, visiting with all the trustees and the elected officials of the township. Like I say, I would envision the first ninety days being devoted to learning as much as I can learn about the people and policies of the township. So, you know, a fair amount of reading in there as well of various policy documents that the township may have adopted.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway.
Please describe your experience partnering with outside consultants to ensure effective service delivery.
Well, so I've been on both sides of that transaction. As I mentioned, I was a planning consultant for many years, so I was the one being called upon to deliver those services. Likewise, I've used quite a few. In my, in my days at Pittsfield, our planning consultant Carl Schmaltz and our township engineers, which at that time was Ears Lewis North May, later Stan Tech, were critical to our operation. I relied heavily on them, obviously township attorney as well. You know, so I, I have both an appreciation for, you know, what those services can do for the community, but also an understanding of the legitimate expectations of a client and how to meet those. And then honestly seen a number of examples, you know, during my consulting career of how not to meet them as well. So I think I have a correct, a pretty well-honed understanding of what the correct expectations of of a, of a professional consultant or any formal consulting firm should be.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome.
What is your experience with applying best practices for improvements in business processes and workflow?
Well, I would not say that I'm a scientific manager, right, as that would imply. You know, my, my, you know, people think I'm flippant sometimes in saying this, but my theory of management is that it's paying attention. And we all have different ways of, of keeping track of things. Some people have metrics, some people have a more scientific approach. But for me, if you're paying attention to business of the unit of government through whatever means it is, then you're being a good manager. And there's not one specific cookbook approach to doing that.
Thank you. Trustee Noel.
What challenges do you see the township facing in the coming years?
Well, when we had our listening session with staff, I asked them questions, so maybe I cheated, I don't know, but they, they expressed it as I would have imagined, your experience of a tension between the demands of development and those who want to retain some portion of the township and a rural character. Obviously, we dealt with that during my time at Pittsfield as well. You know, people can have different ideas of whether we struck a good balance between that or not. When I, when I was there, the plan was that Michigan Avenue was our dividing line and south of Michigan Avenue was going to be rural, north of it was going to be suburban. But, you know, to answer your question, I suspect that that is a very significant issue in the township right now. You know, I know you've been without this position for a couple of years. I don't know exactly why. I assume the pandemic had a little bit to do with it, but in bringing the position back, I would assume that there will be some challenges associated with, with that and in terms of it becoming, the position becoming what the board wants it to be. And I would imagine not everyone on the board has the same idea of what they want it to be. And there'll be a time where the person in that position will learn and grow into, into that role. The role will evolve to what it wants to be, but that'll be a challenge, I would assume as well. Yeah, just, you know, as we're all experienced, I was talking to my utilities director this morning, as a matter of fact, about we had some SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows during a rain event a couple of weeks ago, where we got four inches of rain in a fairly short period of time. And we had stormwater infiltration into the sanitary system to the degree that we were treating four times sewage that we would normally treat during that period of time. And what I was saying to Will is, well, you know, that's not going to be a hundred-year storm anymore, right? That's the new normal these days. And we have sustainability demands that we figure out new ways to, to deal with our climate because it is changing and we need to adapt. And I assume Siow Township is no different.
Thank you. Treasurer Palmer.
How would you calm down a contentious situation?
Well, you know, lowering the temperature of the dialogue is important, but having dialogue is critical. And I've found, I don't know exactly what sort of contentious situation you're envisioning. Hopefully, it's not physically contentious, but in terms of people who are upset, you know, the best way to diffuse that is to, to listen and be patient. Patience is something that can heal many, many divides over a period of time. So I honestly believe in, in listening and listening patiently to try to diffuse situations that are escalated in terms of their emotion.
Thank you. Our last question, trustee Vogel.
So can you describe your experience facilitating strategic planning discussions?
Yeah, so I was a planning consultant for about five years. Then we had a number of such occasions at McCann to do that. You know, there's different approaches that one can use, but engaging the broadest spectrum of the public that you can at the outset is the way to get it started. And then brainstorming over, you know, the goals, objectives and strategies that flow from what you've heard are the issues that the populace wants to have addressed is, in my view, the, the way to hone in on a really relevant strategic plan.
Thank you. Greg, you have five minutes to ask any questions that you might have of the board.
Thank you. So I'm interested in how this position, I note that the name is different than I used, I believe you used to call it township manager, now township administrator. How you envision this being different than what it was and exactly how you would describe what you expect the township administrator position to be?
I, I'll take a first stab at answering that question. The change in the name is meant to convey a sort of a difference from the prior definition of the township manager in that there's more of an emphasis on operations and less on sort of involvement with policy. So trying to sort of define the, the role of this particular position is making sure that the township government, that it, all of the departments, all of the individuals working within it, whether they're employees or members of boards and commissions, that everybody is working together effectively. And that that's sort of the primary focus of the position.
Thank you. Five time left. What is your process going forward in trying to fill the position?
Well, I don't, Jennifer, if you want to describe the process going forward or?
Well, there will be opportunity for a public input. I know that there are surveys for that. That is available on the Siow Township website. The board will reconvene. They can choose to go forward with a couple of candidates, have second interviews. And then that will be a public meeting. And outside of that, I think it's just up to the board.
And my, my sense is, Greg, that we're going to sort of gather, well, the firm, Amy Sel's firm, she and her staff will gather all of the input, the staff meetings that happened earlier today, these interviews, the public's input. There's an opportunity after this, after the interviews today for board, the members of the board to sort of provide some feedback directly to Amy Sel and her staff through a kind of an online portal, I guess. And then all of that is going to come back to the board to sort of absorb and mull over. So I think the earliest that we will be able as a board to deliberate would be our regular meeting next week. That's on the 12th.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions right now.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Appreciate meeting you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Our next interview is not scheduled until 6:50. We had a break and one candidate had withdrawn, so that was our, another break in there. So at 6:50, we have Joseph Raker interviewing.
So I guess we'll take a recess until, until that next interview and then reconvene? Is that the?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
So let's name a time.
So why don't we reconvene like five, well, probably maybe ten minutes ahead of that?
Six forty?
So six, let's reconvene at six forty. Will that work for everyone?
Yep.
Ten minutes. Thank you.
Recording stopped.